It's Monday, July 25th, 2022, 9:00 AM. Wilson County Commissioners Court is now in session. We'll have the opening prayer by Charles Ockham, former chaplain of Florisville Eastern Star, Chapter Number 271, and Pastor Nashville Brahan's line clock number 227. Charles.
Thank you. If y'all bow your heads with me. Our most gracious and heavenly Father, as we bow our heads to offer praise to you this morning, we ask your blessing upon this assembly. Give these elected officials the wisdom to do what is right and pleasing in your eyes. Bless and place your protective hands upon all our first responders and everyone protecting this country of ours, wherever they may be located. Dear Lord, if you can see your way to allow this part of the country to be blessed with a little bit of rain, we would certainly appreciate it. All these things we ask in your holy and precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, moving on along to Agenda Item Number Three, Public Comments.
We have none at this time, Judge.
Okay. So, we're going to Agenda Item Number Four, Certificates of Completion and Awards. So, I've got three here, but okay. Certificate of Completion, the VG Young Institute of County Government Awards, this certificate to Paul Fowle and Jeffrey Perdola for successfully completing 13 hours of educational training at the 88th Annual South Texas County Judges and Commissioners Conference, Corpus Christi, Texas, June 13th through the 16th, 2022, VG Young Institute of County Government. And we have County Academy Certificate of Course Completion for 2021-2022, software awareness training awarded to Jeffrey Perdola, 7/19/2022. Thank you. Is there any more?
That is it.
Okay. Okay, Agenda Item Number Five, Richard L. Jackson County Judge, Edwin Baker, health and public safety, renewing burn ban, discuss and take action. Good morning, Judge Jackson, sir. Good. Okay, you got anything you'd like to say?
Not really, just another 90 days, let's pray for rain some more.
Yes. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Judge, we approve the burn ban.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Fowle, second by Commissioner Wiley, we extend the burn ban for 90 days. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, we've got it extended. Thank you. Hang on, Eva's got to attest this. Okay, moving to Agenda Item Number Six, Richard L. Jackson County Judge, Brenda El Trevino, Wilson County Auditor, 6A, discussing possible action on approving Vista SG software for the Elections Department.
Judge and Commissioners, and I'm going to allow Olga to speak to this regarding the details of it, but Olga Moretto approached me and sent me a proposal that she had council review as well. It's a voter's registration software, and I'll let her explain what it is, but she's requesting approval to purchase the software using funds that she has collected through her 10%, what we call the 10% Elections Fund, that she's able to collect for any contract that she has for holding an election, in which she currently has $25,747.32 in that account. The cost of this software package is $22,900, and then there's a $6,400 annual supporting maintenance, which is starting in year two, and this is a three-year contract. And so, I'll turn it over to Olga, and I believe there's some representatives from Vista here as well, to kind of explain what the software is and what they do.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. And basically, the software, we are currently, right now, we have FileBound, and we've been looking at Vista, and we want to upgrade, and this is for the voter registration part. We are required to scan all of our voter registration cards. We read everything that goes through as far as an application, we have to have it scanned, and that's what Vista is about, scanning the voter registration. Has nothing to do with the equipment or the voting side, this is the voter registration side. So, I'll let Nancy explain a little bit about, if you want to know a little bit about the software.
Sure. Yeah, first of all, thank you so much for allowing us to be here today, participate, introduce ourselves. My name is Nancy Sterneman, this is Tony and Tiffany, we're with Vista Solutions Group. Just a little bit about us, we're based in Austin, been in business for over two decades, and we work exclusively with state and local governments. Currently, we're working about 50% of the elections offices in the state of Texas, so we're no stranger. And then, what we're offering are tools that are going to help the Elections Office with everything from preparing for and passing state audits, ensuring data integrity on voter rolls, and even securely managing their ballot by mail processes. So, overall, it's going to help the department be better organized, more efficient, and most importantly, more secure, all while saving time and money. So, we have been in communication with the county for some time now, we've also had conversations with IT, so we feel confident that what we're offering is going to be a great improvement for the department. So, we'd appreciate your support in allowing us to serve you, we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
I have a few.
Sure.
Okay, is there going to be any kind of an interface between y'all or this software and ESNS?
No.
No interface at all?
Very separate.
It's completely separate?
Yes, and I think that was brought up because there's, some counties are online with Team, and some counties are what's called offline with Team, and so, in this case, it does not intersect at all.
We are an online county, so we actually are connected with Secretary of State, and so therefore, the new system that ESNS is working on for the end of the year will have nothing to do with what we have. If we wanted, if, let's just say, we were to go with the ESNS program, we would have to get ourselves offline from Secretary of State and then go separate online, and I don't want to do that. I want to stay with Secretary of State where we still have connection with them as far as our reports and stuff, because ours go straight to Secretary of State right now with the program we have with them.
So, I will confirm that, because I did follow up, I checked with ESNS, which is the company that we just purchased our new voter equipment, and his name's Matt, and he mentioned that if the county really wants to get something now, they can't help, they have a voter registration system that's being sold throughout the United States, but not available in Texas yet, they're looking at the end of December, target date for Texas. He does say that, I believe, our offering is much more comprehensive, and believe it will integrate nicely with our poll books, which are the poll books we purchased from ESNS. And he says other voter registration systems won't integrate with the poll books, but we would still be allowed to use them as we do today, and that's confirming what Olga's mentioning. So, it's just, I don't, it doesn't have anything to do with the actual voter equipment, software or package that we have, it's a completely separate system that Vista offers, ESNS offers, or not offering yet in Texas, but will offer, so.
Okay. That was my big concern, because I know we've had a concern since we got NetData and other software, you got two softwares, they don't interface, so I don't care what, who says, what they say, if there's one company, and then we've still got NetData here, and our e-file, there's Tyler Technologies has a state contract, we don't have a good interface there.
I'm curious.
So, I just want to be sure that if you're going to, we're going to get something, then it's going to, it's going to work, because we've got all kinds of different software all across the county, and none of them interface with anything else.
Yeah.
What, Fowle doesn't interface with NetData, Spillman doesn't interface with anything.
Yeah. So, out of the 50 counties that you guys do use here in Texas, are any of them equipped with ESNS?
Oh, a good majority, absolutely.
Bernie, yes, we know, because we just talked to him.
Yeah.
Y'all have a county that has ESNS?
Yes, absolutely.
Who is that?
Off the top of my head, I know it's quite a few, a majority, I would say, but I'm just trying to think, like, one off the top of my head that I know.
Did you say Burney?
Burney, I mean, Stacy, just.
Okay, Kendall County, Kendall County is one example, yeah.
Kendall.
And we can look more into other examples, but yes.
If it's all going to work, I have no problem, because you got the money, I just want to be sure that it works, because we were told when we got NetData that, oh, no, it worked, we have Global, and we have NetData, and it ain't interfacing.
Right. And we just actually had a regional meeting with, in Bear County, this past week on Wednesday, and Stacy is, Stacy is actually the, I guess, president of the regional, and she was actually talking very highly of Vista, of all the updated program and stuff that they are cooperating on.
Who's Stacy?
Stacy, she's from Burney, she's from Kendall County, she's an EA there. So, again, like I said, we're very excited. The employee that I do have right now, that came from Corinth, she's already worked with Vista, so that's actually an asset to us, because she already is familiar with Vista herself, so, and she left it out there, but of course, we're going to have more updated.
Do y'all have voter machines?
No, we don't, we don't work in equipment.
This is the only software y'all deal with?
Right. And this is Tony.
Yes, and a lot of our customers prefer it that way, to have their rolls and documents and election data separate from their machines. You know, we're not, we're not in the business of machines, we're not in the business of tabulation, we're strictly to help maintain paper office documents, election rolls, and records throughout the office, keeping it separate. Now, in the future, I think that's something we can definitely do, again, we've been in business for over 20 years, we work with, we, what you're saying is a very big concern for a lot of counties and a lot of our customers, but we do work with court systems, case management systems, we work with, we do integrate extremely well, so in the future, if that's something that we can, we can do, we're more than happy to do it, but rather than right now, we're separate entities based upon what our customers need and want.
And this is going to speed the system up when somebody comes in to vote?
This is pretty much is going to help with our voter registration roster, so it has nothing to do, again, with the election itself, this is a separate, election has two departments, which is your voter registration and your election, so this is going to be all maintaining voter registration.
Just voter registration?
That is it.
But when, okay, when it comes time for somebody to come in and vote, will y'all have anything there, or?
Right, because once we maintain our voter registration, that will be carried on to our poll books, then we're going into the election. But we'll be getting, there again, being with Secretary of State, I don't have to go, I don't want to go offline. That would be purchasing another, having another vendor. And so, we work strictly, Secretary of State has our information, so of course, it just goes right into programming our poll books.
Okay, what do y'all have to do with poll books?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing, nothing, and again, that's where we want to draw that line, it's like, we're like another tool in your toolbox, so, you know, the poll books are going to do.
How does the information get from, okay, when y'all have voter registration, everybody's registered, how does that get into poll books?
Okay, that's when ESNS comes in, when they do our programming for elections, they get all of our information from Secretary of State, and that's how we.
That comes from Secretary of State, it doesn't come from that software?
That's correct, but our software can actually pull from the Secretary of State, so that way, Ms. Olga's not having to do double entry.
Okay.
So, we're not, we're integrating with the state, we're not integrating with another, another company again, which is.
Okay, so what y'all do, y'all send it to the state, and the state turns around and sends it back, and that's when it's loaded into poll books?
Right, they program it, right.
Okay.
But as far as equipment wise, it's not, it has nothing to do with the equipment, and so voter express, express votes or anything like that.
So, how are you doing it now, I mean, what?
Right now, like I said, we do have FileBound, we've had it for years, but it's been outdated, and we actually need something more efficient, that we can run our reports, we have a lot of reports that we need to extract from the file that we have, like all of our DCs and all that, all of that needs to be purged, so we need to have a good system that we can just get a report and be able to go into our files and pull those out.
A more specific example, if I may elaborate on that, is when Ms. Olga moves a voter from active to canceled, our software is intelligent enough to know that that transaction has been moved, so in 22 months, when that's up, when that voter's ready to be purged from the system, she can go ahead and do it, she gets a notification automatically that she can, she can get that voter out of the system. So, again, it's not, it's not coming up the system, it's not information that she's no longer needing, and that she has the most accurate voter registration data from the county at her fingertips.
Yeah, that's for my questions, I mean, did that help the ASDs when they re-align to, like, the ASD district, would that help in getting these districts? No, it won't have nothing to do with that?
That's totally different, another point.
That's mapping number 30.
It's a little different, but that actually. Our data might help correlate it.
Set it up.
So, our data may help audit it or help spot check it, if she's.
Yeah.
And I believe Olga currently pays an annual maintenance fee for FileBound anyway now, so this would just be an upgrade in software, like we have other.
Because we technically, we should be having our records for 22 months, and they're supposed to be original, and get rid of all of the.
Okay, well, my question is, there's, when y'all say it goes to the Secretary of State, then comes back, there's no, so that, there's nothing here. That's good, because I've caught grief from the time we bought NetData, but, one thing about it, the JP's like it.
Ms. Chapman or Olga, is there, are we in contract with FileBound, do you know, is there a cancellation fee or anything like that?
I'll get to that, that's what we were talking about today, so.
Yeah, because that I'm not aware of.
What's that?
If we're in contract still with FileBound provider, and if there, I don't know if there's a cost.
Yeah, I haven't seen it, but if you'll send it to me, I'll sure take a look.
To elaborate, if I may, that's a great, that's a great question, because the other thing is, we would have actually preferred for you guys to be on contract as of right now, so as we start installing and working through the data, we're able to contact AIS to maybe basically extract that data. So, there's going to be a little bit of upfront work that we'll have to communicate with them, so it is actually really good that you guys are still currently under support with them.
Okay, I have a question, and then another one you got, because of the, what I was talking about Tyler Technologies, when I go with the state contract. Okay, when y'all send the information to the Secretary of State, what kind of, who do they have that they're, that y'all are having to interface with to get your information to the Secretary of State? Or do you just print a report out and send it there manually?
From, from Team, yeah, so, the Team software, any updates that are made, because you're an online county with the Secretary of State, Olga and her staff is making updates within the Team system, so, so, right, any update that she's making in there will automatically be updated into our system. Now, that does it automatically. From our system to the state is something that has to be done manually, which is the way we want, the way our customers want it, so that.
So, y'all have to enter it into their system?
With the state, it's easier to do, but it doesn't do it automatic.
Okay, who, okay, so the state has software, who handles their software?
It's a, it's a, it's a Team, the state went out for bid, and the.
It's Team.
Team, I want to say, most counties in the state of Texas use that.
It's what called?
Team, Texas Election.
Administration.
Management, it's just a basic, it's a basic software that counties are using, with the exception of maybe.
But since y'all have to, there's no, there's no interface between y'all and them, y'all have to do it manually?
On the way back, the time-saving that we're saving is, because they're always going to have to update Team, Team is the state, is the state software.
So, anybody else that would do what y'all are doing would have to do it manually also?
Right.
That's correct.
So, right now, she's doing it manually in her system that she currently has, and then manually in Team also, so she's having to do it in two places, where now she'll be able to do it in our system, and it'll automatically update, or in Team, and it'll automatically update our system. So, it's just one data entry point versus two, so it helps in a lot of ways with, you know, making sure that it's directly coming from the data that they have in Team, which is the most accurate, but also just saving time to, you know, have to do that twice, reduces room for error.
Judge, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
How long did you say that you need this to stay in contract with the firm we're using, the company we're using now? Didn't you say be good if it overlapped with y'all?
A little bit, yeah, I mean, I think the most, the maximum is three months.
Okay.
It's three months. But I bet their contract is probably a little bit longer, so that's even better.
Okay.
Okay, the information that's on that other software, y'all can convert that?
Absolutely, we've done that before.
With the same software, what is ours called?
FileBound.
AIS.
FileBound.
Y'all have worked with FileBound before?
Absolutely, we're currently doing that with Uvalde County.
Because I know that's one of the things everybody's concerned about is conversions, or it's 100%, I've yet to see one of those that's 100%.
We don't, we don't charge, what sets us apart is we don't charge by document and a conversion rate, we have flat conversion rate, simply because we want to do, we want to do business with you, we want to make things easier, so we're a little bit.
So, y'all have already written the program to go from FileBound to y'all's?
We already have the script, ready to go.
And that cost that we were given, that's all-inclusive, so there are no additional costs outside of that $22,000 and some change, with the exception of year two, the maintenance, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct, yes.
I did read some, I think Kathy pointed out too, about some, that you cancel training, and we be responsible for that sort of thing, so that's one accounting. Training, I guess, would be another question, y'all are going to be providing training to this town?
Absolutely, absolutely, we're full service, so not only does our annual support cover anything, questions, comments, concerns, right down the road in Austin, so you pick up the phone, you're going to get somebody out of Austin, Texas.
And that takes care of the, our yearly or whatever maintenance fee takes care of all of that?
Absolutely.
Y'all are going to, if we call you up on the phone, okay, we're putting you on the clock, you know?
It covers it, it covers it, within the, within the scope of our agreement. Also, with that.
Okay, what's out of the scope of your agreement?
Anything that's on the county side, so for instance, an example of that would be if the, if the county got hacked and the servers melted, and we had to rebuild everything, that would be, that would be something that's out of our, out of our software, we only warrant the software, we can't warrant another environment, so that would be an example of something outside of that agreement. But the annual support also includes enhancements to the software as well, so just as you guys know, technology changes daily. We do updates to our software every single year, if not twice a year, so at no cost to the county, Olga's going to get a better software every single year to reduce clicks and make her work life a little bit easier. Anybody else have any questions?
And you okay, counsel, you okay with this?
Yes, I've looked at it and made my comments, and they kindly made the changes.
Just out of curiosity, how long's the conversion take?
Depends, once we get in there and start rolling up our sleeves, but we're looking at it probably about two months.
Two months?
That's, that's a, that's a general lead time to be able to do that, but again, once we, once we roll up our sleeves and look at it, we'll have a better understanding of what it is. We want to do it right, it's something that we don't want, we don't want to write the script, we want to make sure that everything's transferred over, testing, and where it is.
Yeah, that's fairly, I mean, I would, just speaking from experience, that's fairly common in terms of conversion, because when we converted from HCSS to Financial Intelligence, it took about a six-month process before we were finally converted, I mean, it's so much data that you have to ensure, you know, the integrity of the data is protected, and everything is migrated correctly, and we're still in process today, a year later, but that's not, that's not surprising to me.
Will y'all have somebody on site during some of that time?
We can, we're right down the road, typically, we do training first virtually, but if we need to come on site and do training, test things, we definitely can. We'll make sure your county's taken care of.
And we did talk to John, so he is aware of all of this also, so he was okay with it, he just said, I know the judge had some questions, but other than that, he was okay.
I did send all of the documentation to John about a month ago, prior to putting it on the agenda for his, him to review, to ensure that it's compatible with our server and network and all of that, and he didn't have.
And then he sent it to me, and I looked at it also, and I told the judge.
Well, I've been on.
I mean, we all had different things we were looking at.
Thank you for the time.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve purchasing of Vista SG software for the Elections Department. Second, motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Perdola, approve Vista SG software for the Elections Department to handle the.
I was looking for it, I didn't find it.
Okay, to handle voter registration? Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to vote for it, so, now the most.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, moving right along, 6B, discussing possible action on renewal of in-kind contribution for Communal Real Services for year 2023.
Good morning, I'm Deanne Poppy, I am the Director of Mental Health Services for Communal Real. Communal Real is the local mental health authority, the local intellectual and developmental disability authority, and the provider for ECI services. Well, the MH and IDD are over a nine-county area, which includes Wilson County, and our early childhood intervention services are through a 17-county area. Because the mental health and intellectual developmental disability programs receive general revenue from Health and Human Services Commission, we are required to have a match contribution from our supporting counties that we serve. And so, Communal Real has received support from Wilson County for many years in the form of the building over on B Street, where our mental health, our adult mental health clinic is, that was donated by the Advisory Board to the county many years ago, and so that is the in-kind contribution that the county has, as well as part of the rent, I believe, on the Third Street building that we lease from the county. So, we are not asking for anything additional, just the continued support through those two buildings, the in-kind contribution.
Thank you.
Sure.
Next motion, we continue in-time contribution for Communal Real Community Services for fiscal year 2023.
Second. Okay, motion by Commissioner Perdola, second by Commissioner Fowle. Is there any more discussion? I'm going to make, okay, we have, the buildings that we have so far are still worth more than what our in-kind, our contribution is, or supposed to be, what our match is, and y'all can see it on there, is 104,642, and what our support is from the, what would be building rental would be 137,830, so we're still in good shape there. And we also rent the other office on B Street to Communal Real, so, that being said, any more discussion?
I do have a question, Judge.
Sure.
The mental health, on the second page, program like 66%, how much is Wilson County, do you have any idea?
No, if that was on the. No, if that was on the first one, so if you can see for fiscal year 2021, we serve 1,718 consumers in Wilson County, and in 2022 so far, through May 2022, we've served 1,402.
Okay, that's the mental health part?
That would be with all of our programs, so for mental health, I would have to get those for you separately, but I would say the majority of those are mental health, because we do, we have on that new Third Street office that we recently had a ribbon cutting for, we're providing substance abuse services as well as, that's where our mobile crisis outreach team is located, and we have some veteran services out of that office as well, so we've really increased some numbers just by having that facility.
Thank you. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, how many of these will need to sign?
I have to take one back with me, and then I guess you move me one.
Okay, hang on, just a second, I need a couple of time, we'll get to it.
Please don't have your copy. Thank you.
Thank you all for your continued support.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along to agenda item seven, Rebecca Striven Development, okay, Firmess and Development Director, isn't that, hold on a minute. 7A, dissolving of private lane N1, precinct one, Seal Lane, review and approve. Somebody don't like it no more?
So, it's a long story, but I'll try to wrap it up. On the sheet, Poster Lane was originally created, however, on the 911 addressing map, it was marked in the wrong location. It was like one property over, it was along the wrong easement, so.
It's off of County Road 105?
Yes, so it was originally marked on the paper that you're seeing now, but that's in the wrong location, it should have been marked where Seal Lane is showing right now. Seal Lane was created after the fact, because it wasn't showing up on the map, Poster Lane wasn't showing in the correct place on the map. So, it had been, it's being corrected that Poster Lane goes into the place of where Seal Lane is labeled on your map, since it was the original one created and then dissolved Seal Lane.
Okay, the Seal Lane, what are they going to fence it off, or?
Oh, they've, they've already done that.
They've already done that?
They're, they're doing whatever it is they're doing, it's all the privities and, yeah, just to reiterate what Rebecca said, was Poster Lane was named, but it was put in the wrong location on the map. So then, what's labeled Seal Lane on here now, which was supposed to be Poster Lane, didn't show up in the right place, so there was, I think, three people that got addressed off of Seal Lane, but that is incorrect, because it really should have been Poster Lane. So we're dissolving Seal Lane and getting Poster moved to where it was supposed to have been originally.
Are they going to have to change their address on?
They've already been contacted, Tammy's already talked to them, and they're aware, and the official mail has to been, has to be sent out, but the property owners have been talked to and they understand the situation.
Everybody have called you?
I'll give him your number, Jeff, if anybody calls me.
Seal Lane being no longer existing.
Correct.
Yeah, if, if, that's what, this should have been Poster originally, it just got mapped incorrectly in the 911. So I'll make a motion to, to dissolve the private name of Seal Lane and replace it with Poster Lane.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Pedola, that we dissolve Seal Lane and everything would be addressed as Poster Lane? Okay, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, so.
Yeah, there, your, your orange UT colored kid is what it works.
Okay, moving right along to 7B, utility permit, we can do them all at one time. B1, permit number 688, City of Stockdale, precinct four, County Road 401, review and approve. B2, permit number 689, City of Stockdale, precinct four, County Road 420, review and approve. And B3, permit number 690, City of Stockdale, precinct four, County Road 420, review and approve.
All right, well, I gave y'all the diagram for permit 688, and it's two pages, because the second one, well, not, it was tiny. All right, so they are trenching 401, they're trenching for all of these utility permits. For 401, they're going to put in a 15-inch PVC sewer main, they're removing the 8-inch one that's currently there, and installing a 24-inch casing around that 15-inch sewer main.
How far down 401 is that?
Just right there by the.
By the old sewer plant?
Yeah.
Okay. Can they trench it?
Yes.
They're not going to drill it? Okay. How about the 689?
Yeah, okay, they're trenching these as well. This one is an 8-inch water main with a 12-inch casing that they're installing on County Road 420, also trenching, and 350.
Okay, so they're doing, they're not going down the state by the way, they're doing inside though?
Yes, they're doing it on the county road. Just inside.
What is it? 690?
Yes, 690 is same, is also on County Road 420, it's a 6-inch water main with 8-inch casing, 10-inch casing. Yes, 6-inch water main with 10-inch casing on County Road 420, just a little bit down the way from the last permit.
So there's, are they going down? Where, they have a water line that goes down 420? The City of Stockdale or the?
I think they had to do that when they took their city limit, you know, they extended city limits to get the property within the county.
Okay.
A few years.
So they had to do that? And they're just going to a residence there?
It did not specify.
Oh, great.
It'd have to be more than that, that size.
I wouldn't think so, with the size of a.
With a 6-inch, with a 6-inch line, they could give plenty of water. Larry, you good with all these?
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve permit number 688, 689, and 690.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Wilder, second by Commissioner Martin, that we approve permit 688, 689, and 690. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, now we're moving right along.
They signed with the top one, so, I didn't want her to cut it up before, and hopefully they're, they'll sign them all.
You'll have to give that orange pen to me.
Oh.
Right's fine over here.
You just have to hold your mouth, bro.
I know, it started working, I wanted it to stop, because I don't know if you can move it back. Okay, now we're going to 7C, 7C1, okay, 7C, non-standard plant severances, 7C1, 5870 FM 2579, precinct one, floors, discuss and take action.
All right, so this was a non-standard plot request, they did come before the Development Review Committee, met all their requirements, and received a favorable recommendation. The property owners are looking to divide their 20.84 acres, they're going to keep 15 and 3/4, and they want to sell that 4.9 acres that you see on the survey. There was, go ahead.
What is this land right here?
It's not theirs.
Not theirs?
Yeah, and then there's an easement that goes along the left side that y'all see there, that goes to the property back behind their 20 acres.
Did this run through theirs?
It's along that edge, yeah.
Did they get that width corrected on that easement?
Yes, they did.
It's not showing it on this map, the width.
Correct, whenever I read the meets and bounds of the survey, it was correct.
Okay, here it doesn't show this little flag.
Right, so, because this is what they're dividing out, that's all that was included in the survey, this is the remainder of that 15 acres that they're going to keep.
Okay, and this is?
That's the rest, that's that 15.
That's the 15 acres, so somewhere around in here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, this doesn't look like this.
It's just, it's just five acres right up here.
And their access is going to be through?
They're going to, on the survey you see there, they will have a shared access off of FM 2579, and then, so, right around in here, they'll have one entry point for this lot and this lot, and then they'll split and go back to their property.
Tech tops only going to give them one driveway to serve those two.
Oh, I can see that.
Yeah, so they'll be assured of it.
I can tell them what they should have done, just done it.
Well, that's probably what will happen.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the areas for 5870 FM 4579.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Phile, that we approve the non-standard plant, is that what that is? Oh, F, 5870 FM 2579. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving to agenda item number eight, which Jalen Botterfield is not here, so we have Brenda Trevino.
Yes, so, not too much, under new employees, Dylan Tomlinson was hired as a corrections officer for the Sheriff's Department, making 1603 per hour, $35,000 annually, effective July 20th, 2022. Tim Savota resigned from his position as a road hand for precinct three, effective July 14th, 2022, and Hunter Hudgens resigned from his position as a corrections officer for the Sheriff's Department, effective July 21st, 2022.
Thank you, this is all just information. So, now, moving on to agenda item nine, Brenda El Trevino, County Auditor, bills.
Yes, so I've got bills totaling $193,422.41. Nothing, oh. Nothing really out of the ordinary.
Oh, this Cortez liquid waste.
That's it. Port of body at collection.
Oh, okay.
Is that correction to Southern Health Partners, did that make the correction they needed?
They were supposed to send Amanda the updated, let me double check.
It's only about $8,000, normally it's about 16, so.
Where can you see it, Sheriff?
Southern Health Partners, you go third line toward the bottom on the jail, A385.
Oh, I was looking in Sheriff's side, sorry about that.
Third from the bottom.
Yes, I see it. August 22. Let me double check, I need to, I can't remember if that invoice, it probably has the credit that they owed us from May and June, and that's white solo.
That's 15 or 16.
I'll double check, make sure before we pay it. They were supposed to send the updated one, so they probably did send them to Amanda.
I make a motion to approve bills.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Pedola. Is there any more questions, additions, omissions, anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Sixty more days till this fiscal year is over.
What did you say?
I said sixty more days till this fiscal year is over.
Wow.
Okay, Eva.
Sir.
Can we just break for ten minutes, do we have to start all over again?
You have to start all over, because it's a special meeting.
It's a special meeting.
So you may adjourn this one.
So at nine fifty, we're adjourned. At ten o'clock, we'll start again.